Please rise to the flag. The flag is to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call roll.
Councilmember Erby?
Here.
Councilmember Page?
Here.
Councilmember Wassinger? Councilmember Gray?
Present.
Councilmember Dolan?
Here.
Councilmember Trachis? Councilmember Harder?
Here.
Mr. Chair, we have a forum.
No bid openings this evening, so we'll move to communications.
Mr. Chair, there are no tax compromises.
Oh, sorry.
Yes, back up.
I move for approval of the Journal of the Meeting of October 17th, 2017.
Check. All in favor? Opposed. Journal of the October 17th, 2017 meeting was approved. No bid opening, so we'll move to communications.
Mr. Chair, there are no tax compromises this evening, so we'll move to zoning matters. Under zoning matters, item number one, 6th District. Receive, file, and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number two, 7th District.
Receive and file on the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Under Road and Bridge Matters, Mr. Chair, item number one, 6th District.
Receive, file, plan, specifications, and detailed estimate of cost be approved, and the director of procurement be authorized to advertise for bids pending federal highway administration authorization as requested, and a copy of this report to be sent to the interested parties.
Second.
So ordered. This isn't a, sorry, you threw me there.
Sorry.
Other communications?
Item number one.
Receive and file same motion for item number two, and that will be the order.
Item number three.
Receive, file, and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number four, 4th District.
Receive, file, and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number five, 5th District.
Receive and file.
That will be the order.
Item number six.
Receive, file, and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number seven, 3rd District.
Receive, file, and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number eight, 3rd District.
Same motion, please.
So ordered.
Item number nine, 2nd District.
Receive, file, and the agreement be approved as recommended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
Item number 10, 3rd District.
Receive, file, and the agreement be approved as recommended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
Item number 11, 3rd District.
Receive, file, and the agreement be approved as recommended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
Item number 12, 7th District.
Receive, file, and the agreement be approved as recommended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
Item number 13, 7th District.
Receive and file.
So ordered.
Item number 14, 2nd District.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number 15, 5th District.
Receive, file, and deposit agreements and subdivision plant be approved as recommended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries.
Item number 16, 4th District.
Yes, I need to make a technical change on the memo. Do I actually drop it?
Yes, ma'am.
And have the bill introduced next week?
Well, we'll put the communication on next week's agenda.
And the bill will be introduced as well?
That'll be up to you in the...
I'm asking. Can you...
I don't trust the...
No, no, I'm not.
I mean, I'd be happy to meet with you. I spoke with Mr. Weaver about getting together and addressing the need.
But I'm asking, if I drop it from the order today just for the technical change, can you, can I introduce it on Tuesday?
Right, if we get together so we really actually get a sense of how you want it drafted.
Okay, that's all I'm...
Yes.
Two motions dropped.
Drop for the technical change.
Okay, so ordered.
Item number 17, 4th District.
Drop for, just for the technical change of the memo to be introduced next Tuesday.
So ordered.
Item number 18, all districts.
Receive, file, and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. That will be the order.
Item number 19, 1st, 2nd, and 7th Districts.
Receive, file, contract in amount not to exceed $1,547,721.3 to be approved and awarded to Reinhold Electric Incorporated, the lowest responsive bidder, and authorization for revision to the existing traffic control devices be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
Item number 20, 2nd District.
Receive, file, contract in amount not to exceed $987,615.50 be approved and awarded to Pace Construction Company, the lowest responsive bidder, and authorization for revision to the existing traffic control devices be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
Item number 21, 2nd District.
Receive, file, and contract in amount not to exceed $330,351.95 be approved and awarded to M&amp;H Concrete Contracts, the lowest responsive bidder, and authorization for revision to existing traffic control devices be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
Item number 22, 3rd District.
Receive, file, contract in amount not to exceed $303,445.15 be approved and awarded to Gershen Construction Company, Inc., the lowest responsive bidder, and authorization for revision to the existing traffic control devices be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
Item number 23, 4th and 7th Districts.
Receive, file, contract in amount not to exceed $70,869.56 to be approved and awarded to N.B. Contract West Contracting, the lowest responsive bidder, and authorization for revision to the existing traffic control devices be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
Item number 24, 4th District.
Receive, file, and the appointments be approved as recommended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
Item number 25, 5th District.
Receive, file, and contract in amount not to exceed $458,233.92 be approved and awarded to Payment Solutions LLC, the lowest responsive bidder, and authorization for revision to the existing traffic control devices be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
Item number 26, 6th District.
Receive and file, with the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 27, 6th District.
Receive, file, and the county council be prepared to direct, no, I'm sorry. Receive and file, the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 28, 6th District.
Receive, file, and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 29, 7th District.
Receive, file, and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 30.
Receive, file, and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion through item number 40, and that will be the order.
Item number 41.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
And on the add-on agenda, Mr. Chair, we have item number one, 1st District.
Receive, file, and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered. Report from county executive. No report. No report from special committees, public tour.
We have six speakers this evening, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Please approach the podium when your name is called and give us your name and address for the record.
First speaker this afternoon is A.J. White.
Good evening. I'm speaking to the pro team now. Okay. My subject was the Jamestown Mall and the Port Authority, okay? I think that that was a poor idea because, first of all, county has proven unreliable when it came to black minority contractors. It did not establish guidelines for them. The council, the chief executive voted against minority inclusion, and now he's included the Port Authority, which does not have certification for the different DB, MBE classification. So now, he's complicated the issue because the county doesn't have guidelines. Now he's included some, another entity that does not, we don't know about their certification. We don't know about reciprocity. We don't know about how they would act toward minority contracts in regards to Jamestown Mall. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you.
Next speaker is Atrol Harrison.
Good evening, gentlemen, council. My name is Atrol Harrison. I live at 13108 Blackjack, Missouri. I've been a county resident ever since 1978, and I just want to let you know I love the North County, and I don't appreciate the way the North County is looking right now, especially Jamestown Mall. I know you guys might not be the type of buildings down right now, but I do not think that we need to have all those weeds around up there making it look bad the way it's looking. North County always ready to get a black eye paper on all the exits coming off the highway, then tops it off with Jamestown Mall with all that trash. And I just want to let you know something need to be done about it, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Next speaker is John Carehoff?
Very good.
Carhoff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, councilmembers, for the opportunity to address you this evening, and thank you for your service to the community. I'm a representative for the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers in St. Louis. I'm also a volunteer compliance officer with the Missouri Electrical Compliance Council. I particularly rise in opposition to Agenda Item Number 19, the awarding of a contract to Reinhold Electric. As a compliance officer, I have personally been involved in prosecuting prevailing wage violations and access of $55,000 to Reinhold Electric for just the work that the council is letting and approving with this particular agenda item. I brought some documentation to support my comments this evening, and I would like permission from the chairman to hand these to the clerk for distribution, and I would request that the council review these documents and business practices, historic and consistent business practices of Reinhold Electric in violation of our state's prevailing wage law before they reconsider this particular agenda item.
Thank you.
Next speaker, State Representative Bob Burns.
Councilman, my name is Bob Burns. I live at 9057 Southview Lane in Afton, Missouri, 63123. I come tonight to speak on behalf of the Police Department again and hope the bill tonight gets passed, but before I do that, I want to address the members of the council, particularly Councilman Walton Gray and Councilman Erby, and anyone else who may feel that I might have offended them in any of my talk or any of my speeches. It's only out of love and support for the Police Department, so, Michelle, if I've offended you, or Hazel, if I've offended you, I truly apologize for that because that was not my intent. It's never my intent. I respect everyone on this council. I think you're doing a wonderful job when you serve the public, so please keep that uppermost in your mind. Last time we were here, a woman brought up about why are there so many metal detectors to get into this building? I wasn't able to address that, but back in 1992, a gentleman who was in a divorce hearing came through with a gun, killed his wife, wounded three people, including his two attorneys, and a bailiff fired at the judge. And I read the story today. They shot him in the courtroom with nine shots, but he survived, and then he was on death row. So if anybody wonders why it's so hard to get into St. Louis County buildings, that's the reason why. It often hurt me being in Jefferson City as a state representative with no metal detectors in the building, and no matter where you go in Washington, D.C., here, they have those kind of protection devices, and I think they're well served. So I will leave it at this, that I do totally respect, I believe that our first responders, particularly our police department, when the bullets start flying, a lot of us are dodging if we happen to be in that area like in Las Vegas, that tragic shooting that just happened. But the people running towards those bullets are our police officers. So I believe everybody respects them, and I encourage you to please pass this bill tonight, and thank you all for what you're doing. God bless you. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Next speaker is Patty Cantor.
Thank you. I'd rather not give my address, if that's okay with you, because the protesters do come after me. I mean, they've been wild for me since I was here last time. I'm here today to share my experiences with attending county council meetings. I am tired of attending county council public meetings, anticipating speaking during the public forum section only to be shouted down by others in attendance. I would have expected my rights to speak would be supported. While I realize that at times this could be hard, the surprising fact is in some meetings, no attempt is even made. It appears that certain meetings are only for the purpose of the county council validating one constituency group, depending on who's running the meeting. My experiences in this meeting, in the meetings that I have attended recently, has been that the council is interested in supporting an agenda rather than understanding what the broader community wants. The voice of justice should always be heard, but it needs to be tempered when the voice of justice turns into the voice of retribution. When members of the county council take sides against a public speaker, it destroys the purpose of the public forum. The council encouraged people to speak on October 17th, but only the people that agreed with the committee chair and her political view. I'm asking that the county council exercise public forums in a way that encourages dialogue and communication, not in a way that only offers a voice to one side of the issue. And secondly, I would like to say, thank you for considering how you spend Proposition P. We all voted yes for that, and the reason we voted yes for that is to give our police, county officers, a raise, a big raise, as big a raise as you can. Sorry. I know that didn't upset you. But honestly, we support the police, and we know they run to the bullets as we dodge, and we all get under our desk, so please give them every consideration, give them every penny you can. We love them, we support them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Joe Patterson.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Member of the council, County Executive Stinger. Formerly, I rise in support of the final passage of the memorandums that we've entered into for the pay proposal that's going to be involved with Proposition P funds that we're going to, are we currently receiving now, and will be redistributed to these officers beginning in January. It's been a very, very tough road. I can remember my first initial meeting with the chief and county executive Stinger to even bring Proposition P to, from an idea to an actual vote on the ballot to a successful ballot measure. It's been a long, tough road. There has been a tremendous amount of disagreement throughout this entire process, but I am very honored to say that we've all worked together, even through that disagreement, with positive dialogue. I've had the opportunity to meet with just about everybody involved in this process from the ground up, so for each and every one of you that took time out of your busy schedule to meet with me and ask me responsible questions and just kind of get to know where we're coming from, I truly appreciate that. So I thank you all, from one public servant to another. I can speak for every police officer in this room by saying that this is not a great time to be a public servant. The public demands more and more of us, as they should, every day. It is not a good time to be an elected official with all the public scrutiny you're under, but in this experiment that we call democracy, our job is supposed to be difficult, and if we don't like it, we can quit, or we can work better to, work better together to make it work. So just as a county taxpayer, as the elected president of the St. Louis County Police Association, I appreciate all of your support. I appreciate your service, and I thank you for that. And all I ask of you in the meantime is just know that my phone is always on and my door is always open. At any time, can I be serviced to you as a police detective or as the president of the police association, please do not hesitate to contact me. I look forward to our future dialogue, and I don't look away from our future disagreements. I know that if we continue this spirit of cooperation, we will ultimately do the most important thing, which is provide the highest level of service we can to the citizens and visitors of St. Louis County. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Joe.
No more speakers, Mr. Chair.
Before we go to perfection, I'd like to go back to item number 19 on communications. Unfortunately, the way our communications are set up, we don't get to hear public comments before we get to these items, and since I voted on the prevailing side, I would like to move to reconsider the approval of this item and then let it hold its place so we can review the material that was handed to us. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. So now I'll make a motion that this, item number 19, hold its place, and that will be the order, and the interim will have time to look at this information regarding prevailing wage violations before we award this contract. We'll move on to perfection.
Introduction.
Sorry, introduction. Thank you. Introduction to bills.
Bill number 283, introduced by Councilmember Page, and ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of up to $152,000 from the East West Gateway Council Governments, appropriating the same to fund a police sergeant's position for the St. Louis Terrorism Early Warning Group and attorney services related to the St. Louis Fusion Center, and authorizing the county executive to execute necessary documents. Bill number 284, introduced by Councilmember Page, and ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of up to $153,537, the National Institute of Justice, Office of Justice Programs, appropriating the same for employment of employees for the Police Crime Laboratory, and authorizing the county executive to execute necessary documents. Bill number 285, introduced by Councilmember Page, and ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of up to $154,030 for the Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs, appropriating the same for purchase of equipment for use by the Police Crime Laboratory, and authorizing the county executive to execute necessary documents. Bill number 286, introduced by Councilmember Trachis, and ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute contract with Tech Electronics Incorporated for installation of electronic entry gates at the Department of Transportation Districts 4 and 5 facilities. Bill number 287, introduced by Councilmember Harder, and ordinance amending Title 12, St. Louis County Revised Ordinance of 1974, as amended traffic code by enacting and adding two provisions to Schedule 3. Bill number 288, introduced by Councilmember Page, and ordinance authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $38 million principal amount of special obligation bonds, Meramec Buildings Replacement Project and Capital Project Series 2017 of St. Louis County, Missouri, for the purpose of refunding the county's special obligation bonds, Meramec Buildings Replacement Project Series 2012, and financing the acquisition, leasing, construction, expansion, renovation, improving and equipping of county facilities, together with other equipment, capital improvements, and capital expenditures by the county, prescribing the form and details of said bonds in the covenants and agreements to provide for the payment and security thereof, and authorizing certain actions and documents prescribing on the matters relating thereto. Mr. Chair, that is all the bills.
Thank you. Now we'll move to perfection.
Bill number 190, introduced by Councilmember Page.
I'll move for perfection of bill number 190. When we go to construction to this roadway, I'd like to see a plan to pay back the FAU for the funds that it will cost to build this road, but I would like to get it moving. Appreciate the director of the parks helping sorting through this very complicated issue. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, can I request that we go back to introduction of bills? Bill number 286 is Councilman Trachis's bill, and we would need a council member to introduce that for him this evening.
I will.
So bill number 286 is introduced by Councilmember Harder for Councilmember Trachis.
Thank you for catching that.
Thank you. Actually, to rank it. Back to perfection, bill number 241, introduced by Councilmember Page.
So this bill we're holding, this is related to the ICE complex development in Creedport Park. The Legacy ICE Foundation has executed contracts, essentially implements this, so we're in the process of watching that process of reseeding and stormwater repair continue and finalize, and that will be the order.
Bill number 249, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to perfect, bill number 249.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Bill number 249 is perfected.
Bill number 262, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move to perfect bill 262.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Bill number 262 is perfected.
Bill number 265, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray.
Move to drop from the order.
Bill number 265 is dropped.
Bill number 274, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to perfect, bill number 274.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Bill number 274 is perfected.
Bill number 275, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to perfect, bill number 275.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Bill number 275 is perfected.
Bill number 276, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray.
Move to perfect, bill number 276.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Bill number 276 is perfected.
Bill number 277, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move to perfect bill 277.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Bill number 277 is perfected.
Bill number 278, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move to perfect bill 278.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Bill number 278 is perfected.
Bill number 279, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to perfect, bill number 279.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Bill number 279 is perfected.
Bill number 280, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move to perfect bill 280.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Bill number 280 is perfected.
Bill number 281, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move to perfect bill 281.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Bill number 281 is perfected.
Bill number 282, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to perfect, bill number 282.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Bill number 282 is perfected. Final passage.
Bill number 183, introduced by Councilmember Erby.
Please hold.
Bill number 183 is held.
Bill number 266, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move for final passage, bill number 266.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis? Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number 266, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 266 is finally passed.
I'm sorry, there are six ayes and one absent. I apologize.
Bill number 266 is finally passed.
Apparently, I want Councilmember Trachis to be here tonight. Bill number 267, introduced by Councilmember Wassinger.
I move for final passage of bill number 267.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis? Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number 267, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill number 267 is finally passed.
Bill number 268, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move for final passage of bill 268.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis? Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number 268, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill number 268 is finally passed.
Bill number 269, introduced by Councilmember Harder for Councilmember Trachis.
I move for final passage of bill 269 for Councilman Trachis.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Council member Gray?
Aye.
Council member Dolan?
Aye.
Council member Tracus? Council member Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number 269, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill number 269 is finally passed.
Bill number 270, introduced by council member Harder for council member Tracus.
I move for final passage of bill 270 for Councilman Tracus.
Second.
Roll call.
Council member Herbie?
Aye.
Council member Page?
Aye.
Council member Wassinger?
Aye.
Council member Gray?
Aye.
Council member Dolan?
Aye.
Council member Tracus? Council member Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number 270, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill number 270 is finally passed.
Bill number 271, introduced by council member Page.
I'll move for final passage of bill number 271.
Second.
Roll call.
Council member Herbie?
Aye.
Council member Page?
Aye.
Council member Wassinger?
Aye.
Council member Gray?
Aye.
Council member Dolan?
Aye.
Council member Tracus? Council member Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number 271, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill number 271 is finally passed.
Bill number 272, introduced by council member Page.
Move for final passage of bill number 272.
Second.
Roll call.
Council member Herbie?
Aye.
Council member Page?
Aye.
Council member Wassinger?
Aye.
Council member Gray?
Aye.
Council member Dolan?
Aye.
Council member Tracus? Council member Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number 272, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill number 272 is finally passed.
Substitute bill number 1 for bill number 273, introduced by council member Page.
Move for final passage of substitute bill number 1 for bill number 273.
Second.
Roll call.
Council member Herbie?
Aye.
Council member Page?
Aye.
Council member Wassinger?
Aye.
Council member Gray?
Aye.
Council member Dolan?